This meeting of the Concha Hagan Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that comes before it. Prior to this evening's meeting, council did have an executive session for legal matters. First item on the agenda is presentations. Consider preliminary final subdivision and land development approval for 340 East Ninth Avenue for GJB Properties. David Bossa.
So Mr. De Pietro is here for the applicant. I will walk council through the resolution that has been prepared by my office for your consideration. This is for approval of preliminary and final land development for the project at 340 East Ninth Avenue. The proposal is to remove all existing improvements on the property with the exception of a set of concrete stairs that leads to East Ninth Avenue, and that will provide future access, front access to Lot One. The applicant proposes to subdivide the lot into two 4,200 square foot parcels, with each lot to be developed with a 900 square foot, single-family detached dwelling and a 240 square foot patio with two car concrete parking pads and access to the alley for both. On August 20th, 2018, you were zoning hearing board granted a variance to permit a lot width of 30 feet rather than the required 40 feet. Your planning commission considered this application at their last meeting and did recommend approval of the plan subject to certain conditions. Those conditions are set forth as follows. The applicant would be granted a waiver from Sado Section 22-302 to permit the simultaneous submission of preliminary and final land development, and from Sado Section 22-409.2 to permit grading within three feet of the property line. The applicant would be granted a partial waiver from the requirements of Sado Section 306.1, which is the section that requires a submission of information, a certain radius around the property. The applicant will submit all materials required by the borough engineer. The applicant would be granted a partial waiver from the requirements of Section 22-410.4.1 to permit storm sewer piping to the satisfaction of your borough engineer, rather than the reinforced concrete pipe with the minimum size of 18 inches, except for that storm sewer pipe that's within the cartway, which shall comply unless there's a conflict with existing utilities. The applicant would be granted a partial waiver from the requirements of Section 22-804 to permit a fee in lieu of parking open space in the amount of $8,000. The applicant would be required to comply with all comments in the October 31st, 2018 Gilmore and Associates review letter, required to comply with all comments and requirements in the October 25th, 2018 Borough Zoning Officer letter. The applicant shall execute stormwater operations and maintenance agreements, land development and escrow agreements, shall satisfy any and all outstanding invoices with the borough, and shall otherwise abide with all terms of the resolution. Again, Mr. De Pietro is here. Should you have any questions with respect to the application? But the resolution as prepared before you would be ready for adoption if you so chose.
Mike, will you repeat part about the sewer pipes?
Sure. So there is, it's actually storm sewer. Storm sewer, yeah. So there's, there's a portion, they have to be made out of concrete and at a certain width, but if I understand correctly, and Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, these are just running from, is it just running from the downspouts, Karen?
Yeah, ones that they are proposing now, I believe is a six inch, identity polyethylene pipe, like a plastic pipe. So we're just asking for, to try this in a way to meet the borough standards of the 18 inch metal.
Okay.
And concrete pipe.
Okay. So they run in PVC?
Is this like, yes, it's a plastic pipe.
Okay.
Any other questions from council?
If there are no other questions, and then council is, it's your plan to, we just need a motion to approve preliminary final minor subdivision and land development for 340 East Ninth Avenue.
Okay, I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
You're welcome, John.
The next item on the agenda is a hearing regarding a waiver off-street parking for 102104 Fayette Street. Nudie's Cafe.
The property at 102104 Fayette Street, I think you're probably all familiar with, it's the former Light Parker Furniture Store. It has been vacant for about a year. It is in the Business Commercial Zoning District, and as a restaurant would not be able to meet the requirements of off-street parking that's set forth in the zoning ordinance. Council is permitted to waive off-street parking under Section 271307(c) of the zoning ordinance. This is a breakfast and lunch cafe. The site is very tight. It's a large building. There is no way to put off-street parking on this site without demolishing the building and reconstructing. The floor area is about 5,625 square feet, and the applicant is here, as well as the owner of the property, to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Chris.
Will you have indoor seating?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Indoor seating?
Yes, yes.
And approximately, how many seats do you think you would have for each service, breakfast and lunch?
It would be about 150 seats.
150 seats?
Yes.
Interior?
Yes.
Do you have any plans for outside cafe type?
No, not this time, no.
How many employees?
We'll have, I would say on the weekdays, anywhere from six to eight. Weekends, 10 to 12.
And have you done anything for any type of parking? Have you looked into any?
Well, I was going, I for, I, in this brochure, I have some pictures I took of the public parking. There is a parking garage that's about 200 feet from there. And my business is seven to four that we're opening, and most of my businesses for parking would probably be in the hours from seven to nine. We usually get people coming to Concha Hagan, stop for breakfast, or leaving for work. And I took some pictures here of some time spans between 7:30 and 8:30 showing meter parking that's available, and the public parking garage that's at that time. And then at lunch hour, I have other locations in the suburban area. I have one in Ardmore with no, with off-street parking. And a large amount of our business during lunch hours, we service the people that are in the community working, that can walk or already parked. We're not a destination kind of restaurant. We're more of a fast service, you know, lunch hour, obviously, we're not open for dinner.
Not open for dinner?
No, we're not. We have nine other locations, and they're all modeled the same way there. We're open from seven to four.
So you're looking to service the office buildings that are here?
That's correct. That's correct.
But your, your restaurant in general does carry a pretty good sized public following. Am I correct?
Yes, but, yes, yes, but, yeah.
Yes. So we would have people in the area that aren't in the offices that would be coming in to use your restaurant, to, I know we will because
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen social media. Yes, we will.
And the parking lot that you referenced, the public parking, will be demolished very soon. So there will be no public parking during the construction period at all there.
Right across the
Right across the street is going to be shut down.
How about down the other side?
We're referring to the lot diagonal across Fayette Street.
Right. Diagonal is always packed. It doesn't matter what day or night you go. Unfortunately, that's the situation right now.
Right.
When that is demolished, it's going to be even more concentrated on the east side rather than the west side.
So are larger restaurants in the, in the past, except for right now because our parking lot that the borough gets is being knocked down, has participated in paying for parking for its customers? Have you done any kind of parking and traffic study to see how it would affect that downtown area?
No, I did not.
Um, I think that
I do have a shuttle set up for my employees to park at the park and go, or the stop and go down on
On that's important.
Yes, correct. And we would shuttle them up so that would, we wouldn't use it for any of my employees.
And I know behind you, the previous, the owner of the building sold that lot. Have you attempted at all to reach out to them for parking?
We have, I haven't heard back from them, and there's, you know, I have reached out to them.
In a breakfast situation, I'm sorry, Bob. In a breakfast situation, if you have basically 37 tables, how many turnovers is that in an hour?
During the week, we, we wouldn't have, wouldn't fill the whole restaurant up on a turnover basis. During the weekend, we would turn tables over 30 minutes at the, at the most. You know, we're, like I said, we're, my, my model is, it's a fast food with sit-down service. We're always, you know, the people that come in for lunch or on their lunch hour, we have them in and out within a half hour.
Yeah, I mean, I could see the lunch hour crowd potentially coming from our buildings. I think my concern is the morning, the turnover, 37 tables, four persons per table, it's probably you and your friends driving in, two cars, two cars per table, 37 times two, do the math, where are we putting all the cars? So that's the stuff, the kind of stuff that we're thinking about?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, well, the model from the other restaurants, we usually have, we'll have employees, our customers come in, say you have to be at work in Concha Hagan at eight o'clock in the morning, they'll come in, 7:30, have breakfast, have their coffee, leave and go to work, or vice versa, eat breakfast before they leave town. During the, and they even, that's why seven to nine is the peak breakfast time, you know, and they're, they're out of the, out of the area before, or parked at their work spots.
So how many employees you going to have?
Well, my locations are similar. We have during the week, six to eight, and then the weekends, 10 to 12.
And you plan on hiring within the borough and the round
Yes, we'd love, we'd love to.
It's a good idea because then they maybe can commute, walk.
Exactly.
If they're from Philly or somewhere else. We have a train station close by.
Exactly.
Encourage that.
Exactly.
Use our train station.
Yes, we would, that's all restaurants that I have, we hire directly, you know, in the community.
I think it's exciting to have this type of restaurant coming into the borough. I think what you're hearing is our concern, specifically in, I don't know, the landlord. We had this conversation when the property, the parking lot was sold, that we were concerned that what was going to happen for the business and where were, when you put a business in there, where were they going to park? So in my opinion, I think that we've asked this of others in areas where there's low volume parking, is you're going to need to go out and explore what some of the other options are, whether it's valet parking, sharing garages, sharing parking lots that are out there before I think I'm comfortable saying yes to, to this type of ask. I mean, I, I want to say yes, I just think that we're going to have to be very thoughtful about how this is going to work.
I do want to say that my restaurants, though, compared to night businesses or fine dining restaurants, we're not a destination restaurant. All the restaurants I have, we service the area, and for an example, I have restaurants that are only three miles apart. Because of that situation, they're not driving to
So I think breakfast, a breakfast joint in Concha Hagan is a destination type of restaurant, in my opinion. You know, people are looking for breakfast places.
Right.
So I, in my opinion, I think that it's going to be successful, especially what I'm seeing on social media and different things. So I want to be able to support this, but we've got to come up with some, some thoughts for how your customers are going to be able to
Right. There's also, I know Pulver's has a garage very close to you also, that I believe is empty most of the time. You might want to reach out to them. But I think the study is also strongly suggested that would go to our engineers also, if you could do that for us. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, well
Comments?
I'm down there. He's open from seven to nine. Do you ever see the delivery down where you were at from seven to nine in the morning?
I'm sorry?
Sometimes, sometimes there's five or six delivery trucks down at the same time.
Delivery trucks for the other restaurants.
All the streets are blocked up.
Right, right.
So you're going to have a lot of trouble parking down there.
Well, I've had, well, I've had the, when we took the pictures, I've had a couple days worth, but it was open at the time, and then long down Fayette Street, you know, in front of the, it was open, all the, all the meters.
Again, that's the block that's going to be under construction for the next two years.
What's your time range, what's your date range that you think you wanted to get open by?
As soon as they had approval, it would take another three to four months.
So right in the middle of all the construction, where those parking spaces that you've pictured are not, are not going to be available? So we've got to figure something out.
Right.
I think you'd be a great addition to our community, and I have to say, I know my daughter travels from Plymouth Meeting to Radnor to go to one of your restaurants, so I
Not helping me, but thank you.
I know. Yes, but
No, just kidding.
So
Okay.
Okay. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Sure.
My name is Tim Young. My stepfather was Frank Parker, who had Light Parker Furniture. And they were open for about 50 years without a parking lot. The parking lot that's being discussed was actually purchased and then resold by a tenant of the, we never used it for the furniture business while we were there. So we ran, yeah, just so for the record.
And we appreciate that. Your, the furniture business and restaurant business are apples and oranges.
Right, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we never did have a parking lot, for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we just, for the record, clarify what you are asking of the applicant specifically?
Just to kind of check out one more comment.
There's another comment, and then Chris
President Leonard, I might be able to help somewhat. So the, there's a, the provision of the zoning ordinance that you're trying to take advantage of, which we, we have a lot of businesses that do, there is an absolute requirement that this request be accompanied by a parking analysis that's prepared by a professional engineer or a certified transportation planner. So that is at least part of your next step, is to comply with that provision. And, and if you'd like to check in with administration, we, we have print, you know, transportation planners that we work with that are, that are acceptable to us. I'm sorry, President Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Flanagan, would you have to come up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was here a month or so ago, so I don't want to repeat everything, but I do want to say something. I'm here to talk against these waivers, but I also want to tell you, I have been a customer of yours, starting on Old Conestoga Road 15 years ago, twice, twice a week in Ardmore now. It's an extraordinarily good, well-run operation, so that's number one. Number two, just to highlights of the last time, we have spent, since we've been here and since 1990, we have spent well over $70,000 in parking fees. The Keystone Building is going down. We have been paying $250 a month for parking there. We have six onsite spots, and we rent six on Harry Street, so we have a total of 12, most of which are almost every, 100% of goes to our employees.
Correct.
And the Teds, as you know, is renovating. They do have some off-site, or onsite, excuse me, I think at least four, maybe five spots. My problem is, where, where are we going to put these people? I'm talking about, you know, there was a waiver granted for the pub where, on the roof, where they can serve over 100 people. There was a waiver on the Mexican restaurant on the corner, and again, a very well-run operation, but these waivers keep getting granted. Now, if this one's granted, and that's up to you people, what about the next person that comes? The next business? I mean, when does it stop? I feel that we've been taken advantage of because of all the fees we've paid since 1990. That's my theory on the thing. Now, there's, and correct me if I'm mistaken, when the, was it Glazer?
Yeah.
The developer, I know that's, that's not the name of the company, but whatever. When I first saw theirs, they were going to have a 300 place parking thing down by the river. You know, I thought Jesus had come out of the, the clouds for us.
Correct.
Now, the last thing I heard, it's down to 120 or 125. Is that, is that accurate?
It's 150.
150.
It's 150, and then during peak, and then after six, it's open access to that garage. So that will help you immensely. The reason we went from the 300 to the 150, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Peters, is that they couldn't dig into the ground because of the rock for the extra parking that
And you got the flood plain, and you got
Right.
A lot of other things.
Right.
And then as far as the, the building on Pulver's building, you know what the restrictions there are. Not on the top deck, we fought hard enough, thanks to everybody up there, to make that a fair, fair deal for everybody, including the borough. But you can't use the downstairs, the other decks, until after five o'clock.
I don't believe you can use them then either.
No, you don't. They, they
Yeah.
Not according to their sign, but I think it would be quite neighborly of them if they did allow that, yes.
That's an oxymoron.
Yes.
Never mind, I'm sorry. But anyway, that's my pitch, you've, you've heard it before, and I, I just think there has to be something, and of course, I end all this with the same thing, the residents around here, Spring Mill Road and so forth and so on.
Right.
I mean, I've heard it over the years, and of course, it's gotten worse and worse.
Right.
You know, I can't find a place to park, and I live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
So we have created a parking task force that will hopefully help start addressing some of that.
Yes. Chris?
In closing this, I would like to know what your wishes are in terms of proceeding with this. This is not something that is a referral to the zoning hearing board. The reason the waiver was put in was because every time a business on Fayette Street went to the zoning hearing board, the variance for off-street parking was approved. So just for anyone who doesn't know that, that is the reasoning behind there. Are you wishing to defer a decision on this until this applicant can provide some kind of a traffic, parking study?
Yes.
In the past, with the smaller businesses, the parking study has been waived because generally it is much, it's much more than, than any of the smaller businesses can do. When would you choose to defer a decision on this, too?
When they come back.
Right.
After the 19th?
The earliest that we would have them come back is the first, the work session in January, if all items were turned in and sufficient.
So you would prefer to do it in February?
That was January, Chris.
That is up to you in terms of when you think you can produce a traffic study.
But I think there was also a request besides the parking study, was to explore other parking alternatives with the other
I'm going
Mr. Pulver or any
Let me jump in and I'll clarify. Chris, we can talk about this tomorrow in more detail, but what council is asking, and correct me if I'm misstating, is number one, they're looking for a traffic study that you would present and provide to the borough for review. We would like you to reach out to our administration, and we will get you, put you in touch with our traffic engineer, and that we can talk specifically about the realities of traffic and parking in the borough with someone who deals with it on a day-to-day basis. It sounds like the request from council as well is to have documentation as to the reach out to the parking lot that is behind your facility, so we can determine what efforts have been made. On our end, we'll reach out to the developer as well, to determine, to ask him if he has gotten, if he hasn't gotten in contact with you, we'll ask him to do so. And then the last one was any creative, out-of-the-box ideas you may have to offer to council when they're considering this waiver, whether it be valet, shuttle, alternate parking options. That's what we're looking for, a package that you would come in and present.
Just a point of clarification. Parking behind the building, I'm not sure I understand what you're speaking
There's a lot that was sold to a developer that is
They can build houses there.
That they're, right now, they're, they're designated for houses to be built on.
That was never part of the
No, it's private property. It would have to be a conversation.
We understand. It's just, it would have to be, it's an option that we're giving to you. You might not be aware of the fact that that land is available. It is earmarked for houses to be built on. They have not started building on it. So if you're looking for a creative, out-of-the-box idea, that's one we have to offer.
And now would be the time
Yeah. To pursue that.
So, so if, and I would just ask if Mr. Nudie is able to come back with his Ardmore location, which I think most of your center is this proposed location, both in terms of seating, would he, would the council consider him perhaps offering the fact that 85% of his traffic comes from people who have already reached their destination, they've reached the place where they park every day? Would that be something that the council would also consider? Because we, we do believe that most of the people that use your restaurants, except for the ones that are in the more rural towns, less
I think given the nature of what it is that's in front of council, in terms of what they've approved and what's coming into the borough currently, what they're asking for is what they're asking for. I understand that there might be nuances that are specific to your other locations, but in order for them to be able to consider what's in front of them, in order for them to do their due diligence for their community, they're, that's what they're, that's the reality of what they need.
And our businesses.
I think maybe what we can do is, you can give us a timeframe for when you think you can produce what council has requested, and we can then schedule a second hearing.
I'm going really out of the box. There's a property at the other end of Fayette Street that's been sitting with nothing going on. If there's potential to park there and shuttle down, I mean, I'm just going out of the box here. There's, that's the kind of stuff I think that we're looking for some creativity around.
And we would be more than welcome to
Help to help those conversations.
Work through that. Okay.
Yeah, there's another business owner with a small lot also, that you might consider talking to.
But thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you. It is, it's great.
And honestly, thank you for coming to our borough. We do appreciate it.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is an interview for the planning commission with Ms. Rocco.
Ready to build the houses there, because they're turning on trees and everything back there already.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Finally made it up here, I'm excited.
So you're not involved in enough stuff?
I know, I know. But I think that's what drives me, you know? It drives me, just being involved in the community, so.
So what is it about the planning commission that interests you?
Well, I've been living in Concha now for 17 years, and I have seen so many great changes. And I've always been curious, it's like, oh, how do they do this? Or how do they decide on that? On also being involved in the community myself with so many things, I know how, what it takes to make some decisions, you know, and how to really strategize and plan and create the event, or even, you know, meetings or what have you. So I've always been interested in seeing the changes, you know, the diversity of shops that we have, just the diversity of different things that I've been seeing up going, especially down here on the Riverfront, it's been really great to just see the changes down there. And I'm really would like to know, like, what's going to happen in the future, you know, with the aging community, with families that are growing, you know, and even the demographic of families that are moving into the area, so.
So you have a background in organizational leadership?
Yes.
How do you see that playing into what you can bring to the borough on the planning commission?
Well, I can use an example. Just being a commissioner, too, in Montgomery County, we always have to organize, right, and, and really plan our way through meeting with different people depending on the event or what have you. And just looking at the big picture, what's the mission? What is the goal in hand, you know? And looking at who, who can actually help us make these goals come to pass, you know? Who can you actually talk to? How can you make your, create your business plan, or create the plan that you're going to use to move the event forward? And actually just start checking, you know, checking those, those lines out, you know, but also confirming and reaffirming that your goal, your end, your finished line, whatever that vision is, make sure it's coming into fruition, you know, whatever the goal is, you know? As a, also as a nonprofit owner, you know, just creating my own nonprofit, I'm always constantly thinking, okay, how, how can I start this one event? How can I finish it? You know, who are going to help me with this event? How am I going to get the fundraising? You know, who am I going to connect with? And so on and so forth. It's always ongoing. Even in the middle of organizing the ideas, things change, you know? People can say, okay, I can only help you up to this limit, you know, or I can only help you, I could come in when you get to this point in your plan, and so on and so forth, you know? That's why having a strategic plan works, because you, it helps, breaks down your idea, even when you're so caught up with so many other things, so.
Do you have an idea of what the planning commission is about?
Well, I did some homework. And I know, like, going back to what I do as a commissioner for the governor's office, and in the Latino affairs, it's, you use, you actually go and you use the experience that you have, you bring everything that you have as far as your credentials and your public experiences, right? And just understanding that as a, as a planning commission, our goal is to really, I have it written here, my personal focus would be to not only look at the efficiency of the economy, and everything that you guys are talking about in here somewhat has some, you know, connection to the planning commission, but also my, my main interest is basically just bringing, you know, awareness to looking at the details of the demographics, of the future plans of the borough, you know, looking at the comprehension plan, which was really, really detailed, really good, well-written, you know? Just looking at the specific areas that you can really focus on and break it down, and take it from there. You can, the planning commission really could do a lot, especially now with the comprehension plan. It's like, you can really go in and really discover what you really wanna do. But following the borough ordinance, you know, I mean, the laws, I know, it's my understanding that we go to classes to kinda, you know, understand this better, which would be great for me, you know, to kinda learn more, get more education on that. But I, like you said, I have all this background in my masters in organizational leadership, you know, and diversity, multicultural education, you know? And just being an educator for so long, and just being involved in the community, I just feel like at this point in my life, I'm so ready to go on to the next level. What else can I do to pay it forward, you know? And kinda just be a part, even more part of this community, you know, so.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Jacqueline.
Oh.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consider 728 Maple Street zoning hearing board application.
Ms. Stettler? 728 Maple Street is in the Borough Residential One zoning district. The lot size is 65 by 80, it's 5,200 square feet. It has been a non-conforming mixed-use in this particular district for as long as I've been here. It is located at the unopened, on the south side of the, the southwest side of the unopened portion of West 8th Avenue. It is right next to a small four-parking space area, one of which of those parking spaces is designated for 728. The property was recently sold, there's no other off-street parking on the property. It has been used as a residence and as an office. And there have been several zoning hearings related to changes in non-conforming use in terms of what type of office has been there. As I said, the property was recently sold. The new owner proposes to maintain the existing residential apartment. He wishes to add a, or the corporation involved wishes to add a second apartment to the, to the site in a basement area which is half above ground. And that needs to be dealt with through the Department of Licenses and Inspections. They also wish to expand slightly the commercial space and use it as a commercial kitchen. The type of kitchen it would be, would be for lease to someone who needed a space to prepare food and then sell it off-site, there'd be no retail sales from, from the site itself. The zoning relief required is a special exception for a change of the non-conform, conforming commercial use and a special exception to expand the residential use to, from one unit to two units. While they may think that they're, it's not, the information is not available as to the percentage of increase in the commercial area, how much the expansion is going to be. And they believe they may be able to provide off-street parking, but they have requested a variance for off-street parking. The parking requirement for this space would be the combination of the parking required for the commercial space and the parking required for the two residential units. There's just someone here from, yep, you're here from 728 Maple Street LLC?
Yes.
Okay, they're here to answer your questions, Chris. The zoning hearing for this is scheduled in January, January the 17th, which is a Thursday. The regular meeting of zoning board in January falls on the Martin Luther King holiday. The, this had been scheduled for December, but the, there will only be a four-member zoning hearing board that evening of the December meeting, and the applicant has chosen to wait for a five-member board, so there's no possibility of a tie.
Chris, I have a question for you. By the zoning ordinance as-is, they would need at least five parking spaces, five off-street, two for each apartment, and one...
And I'm not sure if it's a one, I have to get the exact dimensions of, there's not a lot available. I guess we would have to, I, I, there's no comparable parking requirement for just a commercial kitchen like this?
No, oh, okay, but for the two apartments, it would be two spots?
Two spaces each.
But at least one for a commercial kitchen?
At least, yeah.
So we're talking a minimum of five? Okay, thanks.
Which is available? Okay.
On the property, it's available?
They've cleaned out a lot of brush and a lot of trees, so they can actually move over towards the building and put more parking in if they... Is that what they're, you're looking to do, is, is expand that grass area to parking?
Yeah, that's correct. We actually have already been speaking with a surveyor to kinda plot out the land, and we're hoping at least one that would be approved. So that's still in the works, but yeah, that's absolutely the plan.
And regarding the new residential space below?
Mm-hmm.
How many entrances and exits are there?
So we're looking to build like a staircase leading down on the grade. And they'll have their own private entrance, so certainly one, and then each wall, which will be three. There's gonna be two case, or, yeah, two casement windows on each. So they'll allow, you know, of course, for any fire hazard, easy access out. Yep.
But you don't have the plans yet for how many parking spots you will be able to accommodate, or?
Not at the moment, it's a work in progress, yes, so. Additionally, though, like she had stated before, we're retail only, so, and delivery only. So we really anticipate no one in terms of the business coming to the property to pick up or et cetera. So it would really only be one max of two cars at a time in terms of the business, which currently there's already that there, so we don't really anticipate much change occurring from what is the current situation from when we would move in and own that space.
So I, just to clarify, 'cause I was a little confused when Chris was saying it.
Sure.
The business part, is it going to be one particular business in there doing it? Or are you letting, bringing other people in to use it?
Sure, so this is gonna be a family business, we're just starting out trying to expand. So, you know, our initial plan, just to help with some costs and some extra revenue, we would be open to renting out the space to any commercial, you know, catering, that would just do some food prep there. But yeah, you know, it would just be primarily our family business that would be there.
So if you have other companies, that could be additional vehicles?
Perhaps, which is why, you know, we're trying to work with that surveyor to see if we can get one, at least two, hopefully, additional.
And you plan to have your surveyor done before you go to zoning? So you have a plan to present?
Yes.
Because it's so big right now that...
Right.
We're having a hard time envisioning it because...
Sure, your details aren't there.
Right, so I don't know if we need to table it when they have a plan? I don't feel comfortable voting on what we don't know.
What are options on that?
Yeah, no, you would, you would not table it.
Oh.
I don't think there's time to table it.
I believe we have already asked for an extension on the 60-day time limit to hold a hearing.
Right.
From the time a full application is submitted, the borough has 60 days to hold a hearing. We need a written extend, a written permission for extension from the applicant to, to schedule it later. And it was their request that we schedule it later because of the four-member board situation, but we still have asked for a letter on that. So, you know, if you, if you table it, I think the 17th is before, is before or after your meeting?
So why don't we set some stipulations like we do with other people? Before.
But you have, you have three options. You either write a letter that recommends the application to the zoning hearing board, you write a letter that does not support the application to the zoning hearing board, or you do nothing.
My suggestion, is anyone else comfortable?
I'm comfortable.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, yes, please.
I have to say the property is, was in a disarray.
Yeah.
We had a lot of, and it's not my district, it's Anita's, but I had a lot of complaints about the cats and all down there. And you cleaned that property up really nice.
Yes.
I also, can I add to that point? Our landscaper found fleas all over our property.
I heard that.
Yes, so, I mean, we would certainly be more than willing to work with you to help kinda solve that issue, yeah.
And I think it would be an improvement to the area to, to have this, I mean, if it's gonna be a, a family business, and it's gonna be something that, it's gonna be in and out, I mean, there is some parking down there. If he does, if they do create another parking space or two, I mean...
But that's the if.
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, we approve a lot worse things.
Well, they already have three spaces, they only need one more for the tenants. And during the day...
Five, Anita, five.
I'm sorry?
Five.
Well, a basement apartment has to go through license inspections, right, Chris?
What I wanted to say is that during the day, there are no cars on that street, it's empty. So your hours are from what to what?
Yeah, I was going to mention that, yeah, we're primarily, you know, late after, late morning into the, you know, before the rush hour. Yeah, so just mostly during the day where...
And the company that's there now has five, six people that, that are working there.
And we would have less, you know, we're looking at three at most in terms of the family business.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a family business?
Yes.
Which is essentially catering, like you have the kitchen?
Mm-hmm, it's gonna be primarily baking, like mostly cookies, mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, that's most likely.
So then when you were saying that there's a possibility of renting it out, so you would let others use it, but that probably wouldn't be simultaneously, right? That you could all be in the kitchen at the same time?
Right.
So realistically, if somebody else is using it, you wouldn't have your family, those vehicles there?
Right, I mean, I guess it would, I guess maybe depend, but we have laid out kind of our, our architect kind of planned it out where we, the kitchen would be kinda split in two, so we would have one side potentially dedicated just for more of the rentals, for that commercial kitchen space. And then ours would, our one side would be primarily just for our use.
Okay.
Yeah.
You do have the option of recommending, sending a letter of recommendation conditioned upon certain items. If, if you are not comfortable because you can't envision the parking or the layout or whatever it is that you're concerned about, you can send a letter of support if you feel like it is going to benefit that area, that community, they've already done items to benefit the community in the area. But make it your support conditioned upon certain things you'd like to see the applicant bring to the zoning hearing board.
I have one comment on, on the, on the parking situation. This is a non-conforming use that did not have any parking for either the residential or the commercial use. Were this going to stay the same as it was? There would be no issue with parking. Basically, because they're making a small expansion, and when we know what that is, we can say how much parking that would require, and the two spaces for the additional apartment. So it, it is a parking issue, but it's a little smaller than you might think it is because it's already a non-conforming use. And the parking is already non-conforming at this site. Okay.
Any suggestions from...
Do we make a motion on this, or are we just...
Do you wanna do a motion? Do you wanna do it with conditions? Anyone have any opinions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve it tonight.
Well, you're not approving it, you're just making a motion.
I approve an extension to the zoning board.
Okay.
Yeah.
To recommend it.
So there's a motion on the floor to send a letter of recommendation to the zoning hearing board. Do we need to go roll call, or are you ready to...
And we want to do that without any stipulations?
No, I would, I would definitely like to see...
That's my question.
How you're going to put the other parking space in? Cause you have the three to get to the fourth. I'd like to see that.
So, we already have a motion on the floor, so Bob, you either have to maintain your motion or amend your motion, or we have to go through one motion first, and then if anyone else wants to make a motion if it doesn't pass.
It's Anita's district, another parking space would be, you know, I agree with...
So we're going to make the motion with...
One parking.
Condition for, recommendation for parking. How do I want that phrase, Ms. Checo?
One spot.
How many, one spot? So one, you wanna see one additional spot?
Right.
So you are making a motion to send a letter of support to the zoning hearing board conditioned upon plans that designate one additional spot?
Correct.
But wouldn't that really be up to zoning, not us? Who says how many spots are if they have a parking?
Because we would weigh it if not.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. It's because your support is simply conditioned on the fact that they come up with one additional spot. So ultimately, absolutely, zoning makes its own decision.
Okay.
But you are relaying to them that Borough Council believes that this is in the best interest of the borough, provided one additional parking spot be provided. Yep.
Okay.
Need a second motion?
I'll second it. Your motion. No, it was his motion.
It's Bob's motion.
My motion with the amendment.
Gotcha.
All right, let's start that over.
You want me to make the motion again?
Bob, please make the motion again.
I'll make the motion to, to approve. To send a letter to...
To recommend.
To recommend the letter to the zoning board.
With a condition?
With the condition of one extra parking space.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just for clarification for the record?
Yes.
How many parking spaces will there be? Should there be an addition of one? How many total?
Five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry for that chaos. Ms. Checo?
The next item on the agenda is to consider approving Resolution 2018-29, creating experimental parking regulations. So this specifically is going to revise, it's not going to revise the ordinance. The temporary parking is in the area of the intersection of East 8th Avenue and Halloula Street. It will provide for temporary 15-minute parking at the northwest corner of the intersection with one spot each on the north side of East 8th Avenue and the west side of Halloula Street. The reasoning for doing it by resolution is because it is experimental, but by, by putting a resolution in place, we can enforce it. So this will be experimental for 90 days, and then it will come back to council to determine if you'd like to make a ordinance revision at that point.
Jane, you're okay with that?
Yes, I would make a motion to approve that.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Just, the motion on the floor is to approve Resolution...
2018-29.
Correct.
And we have a second by Mr. Strickley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just ask what we do at the 90-day mark?
These, you, you would have to, really, what's, at the 60-day mark, you should take a look and see if this is working appropriately. If it is, you let, you let my office know and administration know, and we would, we would actually amend the ordinance at that time. So right now, you have the benefit of passing a resolution, so you spend no money for advertising, you don't have to actually codify it. If it works, then we take this resolution, turn it into an ordinance, which takes under five minutes, and you adopt it.
So this is just a 60-day trial?
90.
90 days.
It's a 90, I'm saying it's 60 days. If, if it seems like it's working, give me a heads up so we can turn it into an ordinance.
I will, I watch it every day.
I know.
You know what, I have so many seniors come to me and ask me about why they can't pull their car up to that front door and load their clothes or take their clothes into the cleaners.
I think, I think it will work out well.
Yeah.
I know it's gonna work.
Now, who would monitor the success of that? I guess Chief Mets would have some input on that?
It is enforced like any other parking regulation.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the property occupants?
I'm sure they would definitely have input.
Okay, so we have feedback on that?
And I believe we have signs already, right? Right, yeah, we're ready to roll.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Next item on the agenda is manager matters, Ms. Checo?
I have three items, I actually will be adding item C. But item A is to consider the 2019 meeting schedules for Borough Council and Borough Boards and Commissions. So in your meeting packet, there were schedules for Borough Council, the Planning Commission, the EAC, and the Dog Park. Just point of note, on the Borough Council meeting schedules, they do factor in the special meetings that we host for the budget as well, so they will be advertised all at once. If there are any changes you'd like to make over the course of the year, then we will advertise any changes at that point. But this designates a set schedule for the entirety of the 2019 fiscal year.
I had a question about the schedule.
Yes.
Should zoning also be on there, Stephanie?
So zoning fluctuates, it separates, so Chris has, Chris does a lot of back-end work, work in terms of making sure that the zoning board members are available, and that when applications come in, she has timelines that she has to work with, so that, it's not, it's not set.
Yeah, each, each application needs to be advertised separately to provide public notice, so Chris ends up doing a whole separate, long advertisement each time.
You can see her smirking.
Yeah. It is a process.
But the Marywood Park Commission, should that be on there for the second Tuesday?
We would welcome, if you'd like to, we can absolutely add the schedule.
Second Monday.
Second Monday of the month.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, let's add it.
So second Monday of every month.
Yes.
It will be advertised.
Thank you.
Okay. So you will be revising, if you are going to, make a motion to approve the meeting schedules, we will add the Marywood Park Commission as well.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Wait, we'll.
One question. So we are, right now, what we're discussing is the schedule. And we have a, a meeting scheduled for July third.
That's the fourth of, right, so that's the fireworks.
Right, I mean, that's a.
We always have the opportunity to.
So in that, in what we've done historically, I mean, unless you wanna make, unless you want to change something right now, which you have the discretion to do, you either tell me tonight that you would like to cancel the July third meeting and then we'll approve the schedule as is or we advertise and approve this schedule and then you determine your, your workload and you can make the change over the course of the year.
Or possibly even change the time that day or.
Correct.
I'd like to change it tonight. And do it, get it in motion now instead of putting it on the back burner.
That's, you tell me what you'd like to do.
We don't know because we don't know what we're gonna have.
Right.
Is it possible, so if we don't know that, for at this point, we could say like five o'clock or something earlier for that day?
Yes.
And then if there is not a need.
And we, then we could therefore cancel.
That clock, like.
Okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion to keep it as is for now?
Well, you, the, the.
There's no need to change it now, we can do it in the future.
Okay, so with a point of clarity on July third, so July third is, will be your fireworks day. This schedule that will be advertised has it listed as a seven PM date. I'm going to tell you right now that realistically, all of us will be focused on that.
Right.
Not on this meeting that's scheduled for that night.
That's why I would like to propose five o'clock, if at all, but let's say five o'clock.
I wouldn't even make it five, I'd cancel it and would throw it another, throw it the.
Eric, we do a Tuesday.
Can we do it this way? Can we take it off? Because there obviously is concern about it. But when we look at our work volume in May and June, figure out if we need to add a meeting somewhere?
Add it, yes.
Skip a work session.
Correct. You can add a date, just realize that it's an additional cost for advertising, but.
It's easier to skip a work session than a, a, a.
I don't know, we've got so much going on.
I understand, I understand. We can always make it up in the same month.
Right.
We have to.
Right, a different date.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the third as an official meeting date.
And I'll second it. You can second.
And approve the rest of the schedule for 2019.
Perfect.
All in favor? Somebody second?
Aye.
My god, somebody second?
I'll second.
Yeah, we changed it.
Yeah, and I.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I know, it's been a long night already. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss the agreement with Tri-State Financial Group LLC for the collection of business privilege tax, mercantile tax, and local service taxes. The agenda item request that was in your packet explains what the current agreement stipulations entailed. Right now, there is a set increase clause where it goes, it's from two percent off of a certain number of, of collections and it increases to ten percent in excess of two point three million approximately. We've met with Tri-State Financial. We actually have a really good working relationship with them and they do a good job for the borough. So I'm not making the recommendation to move to a different provider. I'm making the recommendation that the stipulations of the agreement be revised. I've already informed the individual that we work with directly that ten percent is off the table. So what I am proposing for council to consider, and this will be on your agenda for the nineteenth for consideration, if you're so inclined to agree to it. But I would agree to the baseline two percent of the gross taxes collected. That would be my offer. And then anything after that, we would be eliminating the ten percent escalating clause and we would offer up to five percent only on taxes that are collected in the categories of delinquents or discoveries. So the incentive for them to track down anyone who has not paid on their taxes or to discover any new businesses that have come into the borough and have not filed, that is, in my opinion, where the extra commission should come in because they are doing extra work to, so the borough can earn extra taxes or collect the taxes from those individuals that are not paying their taxes. So I'm eliminating the idea that they just automatically receive an additional percentage based off the fact that we are collecting additional taxes. I don't necessarily think that's fair to the borough. But I do, I do think giving them an incentive to find the extra dollars that we're not receiving is a fair offer to replace what they've currently been, they've received, which was originally signed in 2010.
So let me ask you a question.
Twenty-ten was the original.
Question for Mike? Do I, if I ask the question?
Go ahead, sir.
Residential people running their business out of their homes, okay? Is that gonna help? Are they gonna look for that also?
Probably, no.
I mean, they.
Probably not, although we could direct them, they would have an incentive to.
So we, we had that conversation with him and we, and we asked him to come up with some creative ways to find them.
Great.
We talked about some coordination between Berchheimer, from an EIT perspective, and then the business privilege tax. So yes, whether they'll be successful in doing so, but if you give them the five percent commission off of the discovery, then they might be more incentivized to do so.
I mean, there is people doing it, and I mean, I, I understand that, you know, maybe they can't afford an office, but if any other people can afford an office and we run a business and we have offices and we pay all the taxes, why shouldn't they? And also, there's people in this town that own property that are renting garages out to businesses and they're putting their vehicles on the street, they're parking them there. And this is where this parking enforcement is gonna get involved with people renting garages and parking their vans there or whatever for a day or two because one guy jumps in the other van and they leave the van there for two days. So this is the stuff we're gonna be looking for, but people shouldn't be running businesses out of garages either, okay? I mean, because it impacts the residential areas and even parking the alley sometimes.
Right.
So.
So I needed to bring it to your attention. I was given instructions at the beginning of 2018 to do an evaluation of services and service providers. This is one that we took a look at. It has not been looked at since 2010. I think that what I've proposed is a fair proposal. I'm open to any other ideas that you may have. If you can think about it over the course of the next two weeks and let me know, then on your agenda for the nineteenth will be the, an, an agreement that will be drafted between my office and Mike's office that we'll go back to Tri-State Financial with and ask them to agree to.
Steph, since 2010, do we know, has Tri-State ever collected, gotten to the point where they collected ten percent?
The first year where it was significant was 2018.
So it's not in their best interest to.
It's not in their best interest for, for us to eliminate their ten percent escalation clause.
Okay.
It's not.
So this isn't going to be necessarily an easy negotiation?
No.
Okay.
But that's okay.
Okay.
Nothing's easy.
Okay, so this will be in front of you again in two weeks. If you have any alternative options that you'd like me to explore or put in front of you for a final vote and, on the nineteenth, please let me know. Good with that? Anything on your end?
All good.
Okay. I do have an addition to the agenda and it's a administrative item. But for the Sora West application, there is, there are specific forms that need to be signed for the traffic signal improvements and they require a resolution. And it's really just giving the borough manager the authority to execute and, and actually submit the forms on behalf of the borough. So what I'm looking for is for you to consider approving Resolutions 2018-30 to, through 2018-34, authorizing the borough manager to submit traffic signal improvement applications to PENDUP for the Sora development. I would need a motion if you're inclined.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Brittany, if you'll just note the recusal? Thank you. That is all the items I have under manager matters.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is consider authorizing advertisement of the proposed amendment to the Sora waste ordinance.
Yes, I'll turn this over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you. So a few meetings ago, Ray indicated to you that there were certain items that would, that would be taken off of the borough's collection schedule. Those include grass clippings, which were previously included under your definition, definition of leaf waste, and also waste and recycling from manufacturing, commercial, business, institutional, and industrial sources by the borough. The ordinance that's before you has several provisions, but they, they all achieve the same thing. So in each, in each section, what I have done is clarified that grass clipping shall no longer be considered leaf waste, that all trade waste, which, which are the non-residential uses that I just enumerated, shall be collected and disposed of by a contractor, collector, under direct agreement with the owner or occupant, with the costs thereof to be paid by the owner or occupant. And then each section amends the section as required to make sure that it's clear that a collector, contractor will be doing the work pursuant to agreement for those uses. This accomplishes what Public Services was trying to do in terms of taking waste and recycling for those uses out from the responsibilities of the borough and also to remove grass clippings from the materials to be collected by the borough. If you're inclined this evening, you would make a motion to advertise the ordinance.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is legal matters?
I'm going, you, I'm gonna introduce them, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, the, the next three items in front of you on the agenda are, relate to this building. Mr. Franchillo is here. If you could please come to the podium, Jake. They deal specifically with Premier, Premier's relationship with Tower Health, and then the second amendment to the lease agreement that has been revised and updated as, that's dated October 12th, and then a third amendment to the lease agreement with Premier Urgent Care. Jake, if you wanna just give a brief overview of the three agenda items?
Sure. The second amendment was signed, that has Premier Urgent Care taking the remainder of the retail space here at the building. In that second amendment, there was a tenant improvement allowance that we were gonna offer for them to pay some of their improvement costs, not all, but some of them. The third amendment changes the way the tenant can request reimbursement for the tenant improvement allowance. The tenant improvement allowance is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and the third amendment just documents how they can request and get reimbursed, that's a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And the assignment and assumption of lease deals with the acquisition of Premier Urgent Care by Tower Health. And this assignment will move the lease and its obligations from Premier Urgent Care to this Tower Health entity.
Does Keystone, as the landlord for Premier, have any concerns with the three items that are in front of council?
We do not.
Do you even have any questions?
I just asked Mr. Peters, what do you think?
My office had an opportunity to review all documents in conjunction with borough administration. We did, the documents that are before you are, are the result of back and forth between the borough, my officer, and Keystone and its council. At this time, the materials are appropriate for your consideration and approval. The assignment and assumption, just so that council is aware, oftentimes with an assignment and assumption, you will see a clause that provides for exceptions where the, the asseny is not obligated to perform certain obligations under the agreement. That is not the case here. So what that means is that Tower Health is, is stepping into the direct shoes of Premier as if they were the lessy all along. The second amendment adds an additional one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five rentable square feet of general office space. And the final point I'll make, the third amendment, so council is aware, there is a forty thousand dollar allowance being made by the landlord to the tenant. That leaves eighty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars that will come from the rent that's actually coming in for the premises. So council should be aware that there is an eighty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollar amount that as the rent comes in, it will be utilized to pay off those expenses. With those understandings, I have nothing additional with respect to the agreements.
Does it mean a, a motion for this?
We'd be looking for a motion for each separate item.
Okay.
Three motions, yeah.
Three motions.
So I'll, I'll read it and then we can just make a motion for each one.
And I'm gonna recuse myself on every motion.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
So I need, the first motion is to approve the assignment and assumption of, assumption lease for Premier Urgent Care and Tower Health.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The second motion is approving the second amendment to the lease with Premium Urgent Care dated October 12th, 2018.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The third item is approve the third amendment to the lease agreement with Premier Urgent Care.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, Jake, thanks.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approving an amendment to the parking license agreement with Keystone Property Group. Mr. Peters, if you wanna give a general overview?
Sure. As council is aware, based on their direct discussions with Keystone when they were here, this is a, a change in the parking agreement because your current parking structure is going to be demolished. There is, as you all know, another parking lot that Sora owns, or that Keystone owns, I'm sorry, where the parking will be transferred to as council requested. That transfer is to occur at no cost to the borough, so that there are two pieces to that. One, your obligations under the previous parking agreement are terminated by the terms of the amended parking agreement. And two, for use of those parking spaces, whereas you previously had a license fee for this interim temporary parking, there is no fee. You will, of course, once the new parking garage is up and running, this agreement terminates. I believe those are the primary terms that you should be concerned with for the public. We should note that I believe that it's, that this is going to take effect, is it tomorrow?
Is that when they plan on closing?
I believe it, I, I believe the way it's written, it's actually tomorrow that the existing garage would be closed, so.
So they had originally proposed an earlier date. It had not been reviewed and approved by council nor did we have an opportunity to put up a post, social media post, post on the website that the current garage was closing, the top level. So we now will, if, if approved by council, we will make an attempt to advertise, to make sure that our businesses and our residents are aware.
And it, it is December 6th, I just found the provision, so it is tomorrow.
Okay.
So I would need a, a motion to approve an amendment to the parking license agreement with Keystone Property Group.
Again, I would be recusing myself.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Last item under legal matters is to consider approving an addendum to the Agreement of Sale for West Eighth Avenue. And there is an addition to this agenda item that is Resolution 2018-35, which Mr. Peters will explain.
So first I'll hit on the addendum to the Agreement of Sale. This addendum, all it does literally is extend the closing period out to December 17th. We need to extend it out because there is a, there are no specific issues, but there, we are working with the title company to finish closing and, and right now, closing is set for December 10th. So we need, we extended it out to the 17th to give us just a bit more time. The second item I have for you, at your previous meeting, you authorized Steph to take any and all steps necessary to finalize the sale. Um, we have a resolution for you that simply documents that fact. I, I did not have it drafted at the last meeting. Um, and the resolution as drafted, um, so that you are aware, grants the borough manager the authority to complete the transaction um, set forth in the agreement and all amendments thereto, to enter into any amendment related to the sale and purchase of the property, as long as it does not alter the material terms. So if we need to do another addendum, um, this is set up so that Steph can do so without the need to get your approval, provided there's no material effect to the terms of the agreement. Um, the borough manager is authorized to convey, execute, and deliver, foreign and in the name of the borough, any documents required to purchase the property. And finally, um, the grants of authority set forth remain in full force and effect until a copy of a subsequent resolution is provided changing the terms. Those are the terms of the resolution, which would be Resolution 2018-35. I need two motions from council. The first would be to approve the addendum extending the closing date to December 17th.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the second would be the resolution ratifying your previous authority that you granted to Ms. Checo.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And that is all I have in my section. Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is the, um, Marywood Park Commission update. Uh, Ms. Farnigan?
Well, as most of you know, we've had a very busy fall with the Marywood Park Commission. In November, we had the successful Halloween parade, and it turned out to be very popular even though we had a last-minute rain date scheduled, and I want to thank the administration and all the public servicemen for what they pulled off. It was a great success. And one of our goals is we're approaching the centennial year in 2020 of Marywood's wonderful gift to the people of Conshohocken. So we've been trying to increase our usage for the residents, and as I'm sure everyone has heard, Santa was a fabulous success this year. And I don't know if we had 400 people. It, it was amazing. Yeah, we're estimating about 400 people, and it was a tremendous success. And, um, speaking with Chief Metz, he felt that it was a very safe location for us to continue having our, um, events, and also just the history. We're really making people more aware of what a gem it is, and it is the heart of Conshohocken. So in our regular meetings, we've been discussing promotional materials for our fundraising campaign that'll start next January, and our first event will be a Valentine's Day cocktail party on February 9th. And we're working to get the invitations ready for that, but that'll be our first event for our fundraising campaign. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Uh, Ms. Barton, sweetie party?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the Inceptor project was going on, on Caldwell. The authority is pleased to announce that the Inceptor linear project is complete. The total cost of the project was $396,498, which was $59,000 below the c, original contract amount due to some change orders that were approved as part of the project and decreased the overall cost. In addition, the authority received a PA small water and sewer grant which covered 85% of the project cost. The remainder of the project cost was split 50/50 with Plymouth Township. Um, the RCB train pro, uh, project is, is done. It means our bugs are now eating our sludge. So, the budget was approved, and there is no raises in fees. So, and the, and we do have, uh, a few ongoing projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Dog Park advisory committee?
Karen?
Um, so for the dog park, much of 2018 was forming the dog park and, um, and they had come in front of council to present some planning. What they're going to do is for 2019, and as we saw in the schedule, they're going to continue, um, in some fundraising efforts, ultimately with a goal of looking at having turf for 2020. Um, right now, the way that the Riverside Dog Park, um, is going to need in the spring, it'll have to be reseeded. As you know, we've had a lot of problems with down there and the, the drainage. So that would be the plan, and then kind of as reopening that park, they're hoping to have, um, an event that would include the borough and have it, um, maybe food trucks and make it wider attention, kind of get, really get the community involved in that. Um, and then, they also, there's been a little bit of a concern with the attendance of the, um, Dog Park Committee members. So we've had some recommendations on what to do to make sure that those that are on the committee are regularly attending those. Um, there's a couple of ideas that have been put together to make sure that that happens. And then, as you know, um, I wasn't here for the early part of it, but I know we had a couple of folks that came in with interest in it.
Thank you, Karen. Public comment? Mary Hamilton?
So we've had a very busy two weeks since we last met, so I will, um, focus on the Hanukkah celebration on Sunday. Um, thank you to our admin for helping plan that in our new location. It turned out really well. I think it was a good space, and, um, a special thank you to the, um, Conshohocken Police and the Fire Police and the Fire Department for being there and making sure it's a safe event. Um, I also had a chance to go to breakfast with Santa from the Washees Ladies Auxiliary on Sunday, and, um, it was awesome. It was packed. They, they had people, um, all morning long, so congratulations to them. And, uh, just a reminder, um, it's still No Shave November for the Conshohocken Police. Sarah put an end to my beard on December 1st. But, um, it's, uh, it's still going on, and, um, you can check my page or the Police Association page or the Conshohocken Police page, uh, social media for how to donate. All proceeds go to the Susan G. Komen Foundation.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on, uh, one of the residents from Plymouth that made a compliment to our Christmas, Santa Claus coming to the Marywood Park House.
Hmm.
Um, that he, he's been around town, up, not in town, at Plymouth for a long time. He's actually the fire marshal in Plymouth forever. I mean, Andy Mount, and he has family and he has grandchildren.
Yeah.
And he made a comment on Facebook, but I had some business with him, and, and he, he told me, he said that Conshohocken is, is a growing city, a small town, but he said it still has this great small events, family events, that it's just a great thing we do. So I just wanted to pass that on. I thought it was a very nice, and he put it on Facebook, I suppose.
It's a nice compliment.
Thought it was a nice comment.
Yes.
And I think that all the kids enjoyed it. I had my, my grandchildren there. They loved it.
He did.
Um, and I wanna thank Santa Claus. He's here, but I'm not gonna say who. I would like to thank him, and, and I'll, I'll bet you he's happy. You don't have to climb up that ladder anymore. One more thing, the trash cans. I just wanna rehash that, that we were taking care of the seniors with the trash cans.
Yes.
To get the smaller ones so they can handle them.
Mr. Sokolowski is working diligently on that.
And one, I was stuck on the bridge. Uh, well, it wasn't moving, but, um, it, the train, the 8 o'clock train, uh, released, I guess, 40 people, come up the stairs and walk into the buildings, and I thought that was great. And I think that that'll improve a lot when the new train station comes to town, and we should really, really push that because I think that's gonna be a big help to our parking in this town. And I really think that we really have to energize them people, because I'll show you the 2, 2005 rendering again? So maybe, I hope we don't see a 2020 or 25. Thank you.
I just, I just wanna give a shout out for, for the Hanukkah celebration. It was really nice. The lakas were really good. Very nicely done.
You know, I echo what Mary said. We've had a busy couple of weeks, and I think we're going to have a busy few more weeks. So I heard Santa is going to be around town on December 15th as well.
Yes, he is.
So, um, that's exciting. Get the kids out, have fun.
At the community center?
At the community center.
Yes, yes. Um, also at the community center, um, I believe it's the 12th is the senior dinner. Is that correct?
Lunch.
Senior luncheon? Yes, so everyone comes to that. It's always a well-attended event. Um.
Call Lauren to make reservations.
Yes, and please call the community center and Lauren should make reservations.
Right.
And yes, I'll bring the pies. And whipped cream, yes. I promise.
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
Karen?
Um, question on Santa. So December 15th at the FEL, but will there also be Santa going around?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, there are any.
I'm sure.
The helpers.
Wait, on that same day?
The same day.
Yes.
They're coordinated.
Coordinated.
Yes.
He will be in town Christmas Eve, Karen.
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's like Disney. Mickey Mouse never is in two places at one time. Santa can only be in one place, in Conshohocken.
Santa just loves Conshohocken, so we have an in.
We have an in.
And that's all I have.
Chief Metz?
As we, as every year, uh, the Department, Sora pays a, a toy, uh, drive, and it's, it's, we're collecting till December 17th. Pass the word. The draw, well, draw points are here, uh, the community center, the library, Number 2 Firehouse, Bank of America, Capes Deli, Dan's 17th, Conshohocken Bakery, it's over here, Ten O'Leary Ranch. You decide where you.
So what are yous giving away here?
So George, where, where did the toys go? Where do you take them?
They're coordinated with, uh, the colonial neighborhood council.
Okay.
That's great.
And they will take, take their distribution.
Okay, so it's for the local community?
Right.
Not Toys for Tots? It's a local, so, okay.
That's great.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.